Home meeting order stands for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Tatez.
Trustee Todd.
Here.
Trustee Zuphan.
Okay, item number four. Are there any questions on the minutes from the May 2018? More than grateful for the very question on the minutes. If not, I would accept the motion to approve the minutes for the regular working of May
It was moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Carter. Any questions? Madam clerk.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tatez.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zuphan.
No.
Mrs. Carey, are there any questions on the minutes from June 13, 2018? If not, I accept the motion to approve the minutes of October 13, 2018.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Brewer. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, you're doing this a little bit differently. I thought generally started at eight o'clock, did the motion second, then comment, now he's asking us for a comment.
I'm asking right ahead of time so we won't have to go back and forth with the correction. We can do that, and this, and motions can include corrections when they're needed. So that's why I'm asking for a correction ahead of time before the motion.
Okay, so this is.
There's a difference. I mean, it's different, but it is better than he's giving against. There's a motion on the floor.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tatez.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zuphan.
No.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Motion is carried.
I'm sorry, trustee Tatez said he didn't hear when we voted.
He said no. Are there any corrections to the committee meeting minutes for, I'm sorry, October 2nd, 2018?
And that is for me to replace, include trustee Carter III and reduce my plea to the third.
I was asking in terms of those voting present, that should be trustee Carter and not trustee Jones.
I have another change. On page two, under the mayor's comments, the fourth bullet point, it should be Mr. Thompson, not Mr. Thomas.
His name is Thompson?
That's what your comments above indicate, yes. His name is Tommy Thompson.
Any other corrections?
I would make the motion that with those two changes, we approve these minutes.
There's second.
Second.
Moved by trustee, uh, Zuphan, seconded by trustee Todd, that the minutes for October 2nd be approved with the necessary corrections that were stated.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tatez.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zuphan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer. Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Item number five, public comment. All questions and comments will be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to the business of the subject. This figure is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes, may not engage in debate, and I will answer all questions or comments, uh, you sit in or I will, uh, get back with you if it's something I have to do research on. Please state your name.
Judy Cast here. I'd like to take you back in history a little bit. Let's go back to Mr. Towers' time and then to David Hanks' time. At those times, you had a backbone that you stood on firmly, and we backed you with that. When David Hanks got J.W. Fairman, we were all extremely upset about it, and so were you. During your campaign, you indicated that J.W. Fairman would no longer be with us if you won the election, and that happened. And we were all screaming from Towers' time through David Hanks' time that we did not have the money to pay these people. And yet, you turned around and you got an HR lady that we don't need at this time because of the money. Now, things have gone out on the media, have gone all over the place. Residents are upset to the point of having a march and doing crazy things. And yet, it is your fault, yours and yours alone, because you made the decisions to not follow through on what you promised the people during your campaign time. You decided to get people and hire them without the board. You decided it was okay to refuse to answer trustees' questions and make them FOIA you. You don't want things out on the media, you don't want people talked about. The reason the people are being talked about, like the HR lady, the treasurer, and things like that, is because of your decision to do with them as you would without talking to the people, without talking to the trustees. You cannot have it two ways. You've made these decisions on your own, and therefore, you take the blame on your own. We don't like it, we're not gonna tolerate it, we are gonna continue with arguing with you, or however we have to do it, to make you understand. Maybe these people would be great if we could afford them, but at this point in time, it's exactly what you said through two campaigns. We cannot afford them. And now, I don't know how you plan on paying them other than getting rid of people that you honestly need, people that honestly know what the hell they're doing when they come to work. But that doesn't make a difference to you, but it does to us.
Linda Washington, to piggyback off of what Ms. Castor, of what Ms. Castor was saying, when we did have, uh, Robert Fox, Chief Fox that came at that time, I remember you trust, uh, you were a trustee at that time, Mayor Burdison, you said to him, "Here, with a packed room in front of everybody," in a humiliating way, "I don't mean no harm, sir, but are you willing to work for free 'cause we can't pay you?" And he said, "Yeah, I'll work for free until you all can pay me." That conversation went on and on and on because you all felt like, uh, the former mayors were making decisions to hire people in Sock Village, just did not have the money. All of a sudden, Joe Wizwazi and you have a personal secretary, all of these things that we're paying for now, where did all of this money all of a sudden come from? Also, I wanna talk about the march as well. Residents have decided to march because of a lack of respect, because of a lack of you all seeing through and doing what you're supposed to do with the ordinance in regard to social media. They're still talking about residents on social media. They talk about me, but I really do not care because the people that's talking about me, number one, don't know me and don't mean absolutely nothing to me, period. So they have decided to go after me like they've done others in the past, but unlike others, that no longer come around. I'm not going anywhere. I'm gonna be right here. And I heard that at the march, they're gonna have Cook County sheriffs out there, and they're gonna have the state out there. If you all are marching in the street, we're gonna have you all arrested and up the employees participating in the march on this Sunday. You all are gonna fire them from your job. I wish you all would take that same energy and call Cook County, where we try to drive every day, and all these teenagers are walking in the street and will not move so that we can drive and get to the places where we're trying to go. So for this administration to call Cook County sheriff, the state, and all of these people and have them on standby if we wanna demonstrate and peacefully walk down a street to this village on Saturday, which will happen, if it's one or if it's a thousand, that march is gonna go on, whether you think I'm responsible or all the neighborhood watch, previous block club captains, along with the housing commissioners, along with the human relations commissioners, and everything else that you disband, we are all coming together to march because we feel greatly disrespected. I have been to your office in the last year and a half to see you over a dozen times, and you have never seen me, never talked to me, and your secretary documented all, and she told me I'll let the mayor know, but you sit here and say, "I'm here every day." You could've talked to me, why don't you come up here and showcase and show, "Oh, I'm here every day," but when people come to see you, I'm a little witness, you refuse to see us. So, if I was you, I would get with the residents and quit, instead of fighting against the residents. I hope Cook County do show up here Saturday and try to arrest one person that's demonstrating peacefully, and you let these children walk these streets all day and mightn't do nothing about it.
Pat Couch, I've forgotten what the count is. I think the last. I've lost count of how many weeks I've asked the same question over and over, and I guess it's not important to some people, but you know, we'd like to know how many of our fire hydrants are down, how many have been repaired and are back in working order. We've asked this question, I think it was seven weeks, eight weeks now, and I have yet to got any kind of answer from anybody, and I'd like to know why. We can't find out how many fire hydrants are not working. This is a safety issue for all the residents. It affects everyone.
David Farmer, just one of, well, I got a kind of two-part question. One, uh, kind of relates to something that happened this, uh, this weekend or this Saturday, and a young lady parked her car pretty close to our mailbox, and a postman, as I was looking out, he just rode right past, and he did inform me that any time someone parks close or blocks the mailbox, that he's not gonna deliver the mail. And I have asked the people, you know, numerous times already to, "Please not park too close to the mailbox." Just wanted to know if there's anything that can be done about that, and also, can you, is, is there any way to get started, maybe put signs up not to block mailboxes or something
Debbie Williams, I'd like to read something that was on Channel, Channel 2 News, or actually, I think it was 32, last night, today. Fake news, intentionally putting out something, trying to fool someone, putting something out that spreads quickly to a vast audience. They actually said fake news became a real popular term around 2016, and Sock Village started a lot sooner than that. And the problem is, it started on a page that bears our logo, that bears, actually looks like it's an official page. This is not the first time residents have complained about this, and it's not the first mayor they've complained to. It's ridiculous. When people open the page, Sock Village, Illinois, they're not getting the true vision of Sock Village, and they're not seeing and hearing exactly what Sock Village is all about. It's political and it's personal, which is what your statement was last week and the week before, that we shouldn't have to come up here and speak about political and personal attacks, and we shouldn't be subject to them. As a person who was subjected to it for four years, slandered on that page, who actually came to you as a trustee and asked you to shut that page down 'cause it was your people that were behind that page, and your answer was, "There's nothing I can do about it." Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm just trying to give you as much respect as I can right now, and I'm imploring to you, please shut that page down. It is not the official page of Sock Village, it does not represent all the residents of Sock Village, it's political, it's personal, and it's wrong, and it's justified as fake as you wanna be. So I am asking you, you do have the power to shut that page down. What people posting their own name is immaterial to me, 'cause I don't have to read it, I don't have to listen to it. But when I get people from outside the community asking me, "What did I just see on Sock Village, Illinois? Is it true?" No. And most of the stuff that they put out there in the last four years was not true, it was inflammatory. It was meant for a specific person, to damage the other, the past administration, and it's exactly what it did. I, I think I'm clear, I think I've made my point. I'm asking you one final time, please take that page down. You work for all of us, and I'm very disappointed, because I figured if you ever finally got to that seat, as much as I've known you for almost 30 years, I figured whenever you finally got to that seat, 'cause one day you would, that I, I, I would be able to work with you and respect you in that seat. And, this will be the first step to see exactly if I can respect you in working.
Marius Gavino, I'm here again to talk about social media, as you're up here every week to talk about social media, because obviously, when you read that little statement a couple of weeks ago, you didn't read it ahead of time before you sat here and read it to the residents, because you sounded ridiculous, telling the residents, "We can't talk about social media," but yet you have your employees, your wife, and your daughter out on social media attacking the residents that put you in that seat. Now, I could go on social media, I could sit up here, or I could stand here and tell him what you said about him, her what you said about him, her what he said about her, what you all said about her, what he said about you, and let's not talk about Mary Clark, what you all said about her, 'cause that would take about a week, which, you know, you all sit up here and say, act like you're all friends and stuff, but we know, or I know, that's not true, 'cause you've all talked about each other. And you've talked about the residents and your trustees, you had nicknames for some of your trustees that weren't your trustees back in the day. But anyway, I'm not gonna lower myself to your standards, because that's wrong. It was also said during your campaign that Joe had vendettas against people in Sock Village. Recently, I was told that so do you, and obviously, it's showing, 'cause you have gotten rid of some of the people. You said you're gonna get rid of all of them. You said you're gonna get rid of the chief, he's still here. How much longer does he have? And also, people have been talking about that ridiculous you made with the truck company moving into 394. They asked, "Who was the dummy that made that decision?" You know, I have to tell them that we have someone without a high school diploma running the village, and that's all I have to say.
On Friday, October 19th, uh, there will be a second congressional hiring event, Atlanta, Park District, and Lansing, address 2550, 178 Street, Lansing, from 9 to 12. Please join the Cook County Workforce Partnership to learn about interview, adequate resubwayability and practice individual skills. Again, uh, please come out on Wednesday, October 17th, ahead of time, from 6:00 to 7:30, they will help you, um, get ready for the, that Friday hiring event. Again, come out October 17th, I have copies, uh, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Kanyet Public Library, 660 South Majesty Avenue, Kanyet City. Sock Village Trucking Tree. Sock Village Trucking Tree will take place Saturday, October 27th, and parade kicks off at Rick Oak at 11:30. The Trucking Tree will be at the community center from 12 to 2. Uh, there will be flyers in the back of the table, and we're looking for volunteers to come out and pass Kanyet Avenue's sign-up sheet on the back of the table. Veterans Day. We have the Veterans Day celebration that we've done in the past, and it'll be Monday, November 12th at 11:00 a.m., and there's a lunch to be followed. And I'd like to remind the trustees also, if they haven't taken care of you, then talk to the treasurer about their receipts or whatever from IML, please do so as soon as possible. Thank you. Bill Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of things. At the last meeting, we talked about temporary passwords for the new telephone systems. This week, we will report that there will be a training, and I've asked the mayor if we could have at least one individual from each department attend that training Friday morning at 8:30 in Conference Room A. If any of the trustees would want to come, I'm certain you would be invited as well. We do need to send something out, though, to our residents, letting them know that we've had a new system in and we failed to do that, but we do have this new system, and just this week, some of us have learned how to actually use the telephone to make a call, but some of us still do not know how to answer the calls, and we definitely don't know how to receive our messages. So if anyone has attempted, Mr. Mayor, to call and we've been non-responsive, it is because we just basically lack the knowledge. Please remember November the 6th, that is Election Day, and there are a number of seats that are available, and we would just really hope that you would exercise your right as citizens to vote in that election, just as we hope that you will participate by voting in our municipal elections on April the 2nd. The minutes. Minutes have been added to the website, and I'm certain many of you are happy to know that, because you've been asking. Up to this point, we have minutes through April on the website. Going forth, May will be on next week, the following week will be the June. Most of them have been approved, May and June, where July is concerned, we have a smattering of, but then going forth, what you can expect, trustees and Mr. Mayor, is to have the most recent minutes in your possession as soon as possible, as well as some of the pickup minutes, so that way, you would have to your avail a remembrance of what took place at these wonderful meetings that we have. Is that okay? Another thing, Mr. Mayor, I would ask if we can consider, if you would consider asking the trustees to revisit the documentation germane to the general obligations bond that we voted on not too long ago. I received information today that makes it seem as if it's going to, it has been published, and it's likely that we may have to engage in, um, giving people an opportunity to sign petitions, whether or not we would do that, and so that we could have a referendum for that. So, um, prior to next Tuesday's committee meeting, I would really ask you that you have the documentation, that you would just go back and read that entire packet, and, um, let's talk about what and how we should proceed with that. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Bill Stewart, Mr. Jim Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the 223rd Street Improvements Project, concrete work has been completed, landscapers have placed topsoil, there's sodding work to commence soon, and paving is expected to occur this week. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Reports of Department Finance Administration has been directed to you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Finance Department has been working on training our new staff. Our payroll and AP Administrator has assumed many of the functions, but she's still learning the nuances of other functions. As part of this process, we've been relying very heavily on the Civic Help Desk support, and they've been very willing to help us as we chart a path forward. Our front office clerks have been learning how to take utility payments, take payments for special transactions, balance their drawers through the system, answer questions, solve problems, and take various applications for rentals or occupancies. All of this is gonna take time to do it the right way, but we are creating procedures as we go, and we're taking the time to understand how what one person does affects what others are doing, and we're constantly communicating with each other to make sure that we're doing this the right way. As of approximately a week and a half ago, I got involved in the ADP conversion. Um, we've been loading the information onto the ADP platform and checking the records. As of this week, we have one-third of the employee records checked, and we'll be working on the remaining after we complete this payroll run. I've also been working with ADP to develop a payroll interface to the General Ledger, because Civic wasn't integrated system, payroll was automatically interfaced with General Ledger, and this is something that needs to be resolved in ADP, and I'm hopeful that, um, we're gonna find a solution. Um, I've also been meeting with my colleagues to discuss how the system works and what options might work best for their departments. Um, as I've said to all my colleagues, ADP processes payroll for one in every four workers in the U.S. Their system is flexible and can handle any situation we present them with. Um, they've seen it all and built a system that can handle, you know, any sort of these payroll structures, payroll structures. ADP does process payrolls for tens of thousands of municipalities, so we are not unique. They know our complexities as a municipality, and I'm confident that we can move forward successfully with them. Finally, I am in dialogue with Civic about upgrading our system. Um, we're not gonna start the upgrade, though, until the ADP conversion is completed, however, I did wanna get us in the queue. Um, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Any question?
You have a question?
Yes, uh, uh, stuff, and you indicated last week that you were gonna give us some reports once we get those account, uh, that accounting information, can you have any idea how, you know, when we're gonna get those, the statements or anything?
Yeah, I sent out the account balances at 5:00 today to all the trustees.
Okay, so that includes Al- Alphamated and First Midwest and all the statements, the actual statements?
Um, no, that includes the standard report that you were previously receiving, that just showed the balance and what the changes were gonna be associated with whatever approvals the trustees make in the meeting.
Okay, so in, in effort to get copies of the actual statements from, uh, Al- Alphamated and First Midwest and all those, how would I get those?
Yeah, that's easy to do, I have that.
Okay, so I have a list for you. I thought this.
Okay, that's fine.
Fire Department Captain, business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the period from September 20th through October 4th, fire department responded to 41 calls. We had 11 fire alarms, two vehicle accidents, two ambulance assists, three auto aid to our neighbors, four CO alarms, two odor investigations, two gas leaks, and 15 weather-related calls for power lines down, trees in the street, and so on. Mr. Mayor and the trustees, this is Fire Mr. Mayor and the trustees, this is Fire Prevention Week. Fire prevention personnel are visiting all the schools and where appropriate, they will be taking the safety trailer with them. Open house at the fire station will be Saturday, October fourteenth from ten AM to one PM. We will be showcasing all our equipment and tools. Residents are encouraged to turn to the station and ask any questions they may have with the fire crews. That concludes my report, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Police Department Chief, Robert Kowalski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees. For the past two weeks, the police department received four-hundred-and-eighty-six calls for service and made ten arrests. At the last board meeting, I reported on a hit-and-run accident which occurred on, uh, September second in Cannon Lake Village. Officers learned the accident was a hit-and-run. Vehicle to a pedestrian with the vehicle leaving the scene. Pedestrian was airlifted to Christ Hospital for emergency treatment. Prior to being airlifted, the victim provided information on the driver since the victim knew the driver. This matter was turned over to investigations who were able to secure a felony charge on the driver. With the warrant issued, the offender turned himself in on October fourth without incident. On, uh, October eighth, officers responded to a call of an armed robbery behind two nineteen oh seven South Jeffrey. Witnesses did not report any injuries, but said two suspects were involved with one of the subjects being identified as a, by the victim. Weapons were displayed. Matter was turned over to investigations, no further at this time. But as always, any information is always welcome and can be reported to the police department or you can email anonymously at sawvillagepd@gmail.com. Again, sawvillagepd@gmail.com. I'd like to thank everyone who joined us on the morning of October third for our Coffee with a Cop. I think it was a great opportunity to talk about a variety of issues and enjoy a cup of coffee with those who attended. Again, the support from the community is very much appreciated and I thank you. Uh, our next DEA prescription drug take-back day will be Saturday, October twenty-seventh. The containers will be in the police department lobby between seven and three. So drop off the drugs before you give candy for trunk and treat. Uh, police station renovation. After having several conversations with the mayor, I'll be coordinating the renovation efforts on the patrol side of the police station with Public Works Director Kevin Waller. I talk to Kevin quite frequently and his crew's busy now. But when his team can get some time, we'll be working on spusing up the police station. I'll be sure to provide updates as the work progresses. That's the end of my report, thank you.
Thank you. Emergency Management Agency, Allen Snyder here, he has a report and I'll read it as follows. It says, "Sorry for my absence tonight, Saw Village has, uh, has assistance marked S M A R T in South Olive with the parade of lights." In the timeframe from September twenty-fourth through October seventh, two thousand eighteen, E M A responded to thirty-five calls. By fire alarm, two C O alarms, nineteen weather-related calls from Tuesday storm, wires down, trees on fire, sparkling, sparking wires, trees on houses, fire alarm, trees blocking roadway, two wires down, one car fire, one brush fire, two gas leaks, one hazmat, one auto accident and one transformer on fire. Once again, I would like to thank the residents of Saw Village for their help during October twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen storm that hit Saw Village with, with pulling and moving tree branches and limbs from the roadway so that Airs and Fire Department and Police Department respond to emergency calls coming in. Thank you. Uh, there's a note here, October eleventh, Saw Village G M A is invited to attend the Park Forest Parade of Lights throughout there in town. And also they will be attending, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, he will be attending, uh, the Monday meeting held in Crestwood. This concludes my report. Public Works Director, Mr. Kevin Waller.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as I reported before, a couple of weeks ago or a month ago now, uh, we have some leaks in town still after all the repairs we have going on at two-hundred-twenty-third. Uh, two seventeen twenty-four Peterson is still, um, open right now at this point. Nineteen fifty-two nineteenth place was repaired today. Seventeen thirty-one-two-twenty-third place is still open. Um, we will be shifting back as soon as possible. At this point now, we had started a dig on twenty-five fourteen Navo. We are going to be inserting an easy valve at that location. This is a valve under pressure, so we don't have to do a boil order at this location. This will help and assist us in a repair at two-two-one-six-eighty-eight. Second item, um, staff's been working, uh, on several emergencies, uh, located around two-twenty-third Street project. The final ones, um, total, we had about twelve different, uh, emergencies on that roadway during, during the road construction. All had to be worked on due to the concrete work. We couldn't put concrete in the curb lines, uh, with water leaking. Uh, the last two projects were the storm sewer at twenty-one twenty-four to twenty-third Street. Came across, uh, storm sewer over there, the whole top was cracked out. We had to replace a section of pipe. And the final valve and pipe work at Cornell, which was starting the whole project, is completed. Uh, so all the work on there, water-wise, through the roads that we had to do are taken care of at this point. Um, small jobs, uh, we're starting to do as many small jobs as possible. The Villa Chaw, uh, police department, fire department, plumbing lights, uh, H vac systems, uh, small leaks during our rainstorm. We're keeping an eye on those on some of the older roofs. Um, we also will start towards the fall, a couple of construction projects. Uh, one is in the Villa Chaw here and the other one is the chief, uh, leads two is the police department. We're still working on some final details, but we're getting close. Uh, grass cutting in Saw Village with the rain recently has perked up the grass. Um, with the current weather event we had, we are definitely behind. Um, this also during the, the, the weather event we had on the twenty-fifth knocked out a bunch of branches. So right now, our part-timers and our full-timers are picking up all those branches still chipping. Uh, so grass cutting is, uh, lacking a little bit. We will get back to it tomorrow. We'll start to cut and finish up on a few of the parks that, uh, hadn't gotten done yet. Uh, the regular branch pickup, uh, as of, well, as of the storm was over, that's nine twenty-five. And we're giving, we gave an extension to the, um, seventh, so October seventh for all storm branches to be put out. Uh, this is only storm branches, this is not whole trees. You're, you can't clean your yard up, you can't start cutting your neighbor's yard or vacancies and any of that. It's just for storm branches. There's a lot out there still. Um, the east side of town is completed, so no more can be put out on that side. Uh, we are starting on the north side tomorrow and we will continue till completed. Uh, let's see here. Um, we also have concrete jobs that we've been working on. Um, the last, the last, uh, the more recent three, um, were two-two-four-three forty-eights, two-two-four-four forty-eights and two-twenty-one forty-nine Shirley. These are all curb replacements, uh, roughly sixty-six linear feet. Uh, the contractor is aware of it, he is just sending a, a quote and then we'll probably start the job within two weeks. Uh, the next op, next item is, uh, driller will work at our wellhouses. We have two generators, uh, both of the generators had to be maintenance this year. Um, prevented maintenance and checked. As they went through them, they found, uh, one of the generators had a water pump issue they had to replace. Uh, the other generator had a, uh, dis panel, uh, our display panel was faded out, could not be read. That had to be replaced and a couple minor other little items. Uh, at this point, both generators are running and back online. Um, we have one more item that we're addressing, but we're going to keep an eye on the generator at this point and, uh, we'll get back if we have to. Um, airstripper at the main stations, stripper two was offline due to a, a cage failure. That cage has been put back on, put together. The mower's been put back on the pedestal and is back online. Um, during the storm event recently, um, we've had a lot of brownouts due to the, uh, the poles that were damaged in the backyards. Um, as they were working on it for comm ed, we're out of power, the wellhouse, well three, we lost, um, basically some fuses on our, our iron, our airstripper building. Uh, we had to order those fuses, they were in as of today. We will start, uh, putting them back in tomorrow to make sure we don't have any other damage. Hopefully it's just the fuses due to the power, uh, low power voltage. Uh, and the problem's streetlights. We have some streetlights in town we're having issues with. As I described before, most of the problems we're having is in the wiring that we have in the ground. Um, it's old wire, it's well over twenty to forty years old. Um, with the new streetlights, they're very sensitive to all this. We had a problem out in the Cornell section, roughly about thirty-four lights it, uh, takes care of. We ended up having to change the contactor. The contactor was the original, uh, mechanical contactor and it was not connecting all the way. So once we changed it to an electronic contactor, all the lights came on and it lit five days in a row. So far, no problems at all, so I'll cross my fingers. And, uh, we also had a complaint on the lights, two lights at the entrance of Lincoln Metals. At this time, we don't have, uh, the ability to go out and do a fault locate right now with the wire. So what we did was we put shorty caps, was just like an on switch, so the light will be on until we can get back to that location. Uh, and that ends my report.
Thank you.
I have a question. Kevin, at last week's committee meeting, we were talking about the fact that you've been, you were voluntold or volunteered, I'm not sure which it was, about coordinating the collection of all the department heads lists for the capital items for the approximate five-hundred-thousand dollars, um, of everybody's wish lists of what they would like to have, um, fixed or replaced or the funding for, right? Uh, and I understood that as of last week, you had some but not all of the lists. Do you have everything collected yet or do you still have outstanding lists?
Um, my understanding for departments, um, each department was supposed to put together basically a wish list of their items, of specific items. Um, with Public Works, we, we happen to deal with a lot of the buildings directly anyway. We budget for all the repairs, for all that stuff anyway, and their normal maintenance. So I was putting together that stuff anyway, which is my normal budgetary stuff. But I went back about seven to ten years and looked at stuff we haven't been able to do and I'm putting those back on the list again to see if it's possible to do it now. So the rest of the collections, the real, the really definite wishlist stuff will come to department heads and then the, the items that'll cross everybody, I'll put those together. So if I need to be the collector of it all at the end, that's new to me and I didn't know the number was five-hundred-thousand, so I can kind of boost that number up now and buy some more stuff. But no, I'll, I'll, I'll work on it either way.
She made a mistake, it was not five-hundred-thousand.
Well, so yes, uh, we, uh, our three quarters done and I have the information. I actually have a meeting tomorrow with one of the, uh, companies that's going to give me some more quotes on a couple of the repairs for a couple of the buildings and pretty close to done then.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Kevin, I'd just like to know, you know, our residents, sorry, the resident had asked about the hydrants. Are you able to give us maybe at the next meeting, how many we are not working and how many have been repaired?
Yeah, as far as this year, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Economic Development Director, Mr. Joe Fumizwai.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The village has issued one-hundred-and-seven building permits for Q three of two thousand and eighteen. This represents improvements to properties and homes within the village in the combined total of five-hundred-seventy-eight thousand eight sixty-three oh one and nine thousand four, three hundred, excuse me, nine thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars, sixty-five cents in permit fees collected for the same period. Year to date, the village has issued two-hundred-and-thirty-five building permits representing improvements to properties and homes within the village in the combined totals of one million, five-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, seventeen dollars and four cents and twenty-four thousand, fifty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents in permit fees collected year to date. One-hundred-and-thirty-seven applications for certificates of reoccupancy have been, uh, made during, uh, Q three of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, we now have written procedures for staff with respect to the certificates of reoccupancy and, uh, how, how the process works. Uh, the village lacked these, uh, procedures prior to these. Um, also, there was no adequate logging of applications by village staff to track the progress of these applications. There is now. Um, the Cook County Department of Transportation and Highways has issued their permit to Gas and Wash and the village engineer, Jim Zarnik, signed off on their compliance. Consequently, the village issued a full building permit to Gas and Wash. I'll be working with, on an R F Q for the Invest in Cook grant for Phase One Engineering for the logistic, uh, center. I will be presenting this to the village board for approval at an upcoming committee, the whole meeting. Additionally, I will be, uh, presenting the I G A, which is the Intergovernmental Agreement with Cook County for acceptance of the Invest in Cook grant at the same meeting. The I G A is required to be approved by the village and Cook County Board before the county will issue a notice to proceed to the village. As you know, the village received a grant for three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for Phase One Engineering from Cook County as part of the Invest in Cook and Lincoln Highway logistic corridor study. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Excuse me, uh, Mark, I don't have a copy of that report from, uh, Mr. Vindis, uh, basically himself. I don't have one.
It was in your, uh, package at the dice.
So can I get a copy? Are we starting with the date from May first?
Excuse me, but do you have a question for us?
Well, I wanted to ask the question since it gave me information. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I didn't think I was fin- finished, but Mr. Mayor have a question? Are we talking about the date from May first, two thousand and eighteen to the present? Or we talking about January first?
With respect to what?
Uh, the amount of money that we receive for the building permits. Is this from May first, two thousand and eighteen?
With respect to the year to date, that would be the calendar year to date.
Okay. So we could give reports for those that shows this amount of money that we receive? Or will we get that from June?
If, yeah, we'll get that information to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, reports to trustees, standing committees and commissioners. Public Service Committee, Trustee Bernice Brewer.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, since, um, I guess January of twenty, I mean, I'm sorry, May of two thousand and seventeen to today, I have been asking off and on for information for, uh, so I could do the public service recommendation. And to date, uh, since we have so many problems with trying to get information from, uh, this administration, I'm asking again, can I get some information needed in order to make an informed decision for infrastructure repair and replacement? I understand that you said you're here today, but apparently it doesn't take a year and ten months to get me any information. Uh, Robinson Engineering is apprehensive about providing me that information and also, uh, Kevin. So I'm asking again and put it on the record so I can get that information and start working on something.
Trustee?
Yes, sir.
Since May of two thousand and seventeen, you've probably requested maybe fifty, um, FOIA.
Yep.
And I'm sure they've all been answered, so I don't know what it is more that you want. You just asked, just requested a note for you the other day. So I don't understand what it is that you're not getting because the FOIAs have been addressed except for the latest one that you just put in. So I don't know if that's what, is there something else more that you need? I mean, the, the department is, uh, uh, around, no, they're not around every minute. But if you ask for things, I'm sure you will get answers. And like I said, you've asked for, I don't know how many FOIA requests on different items. I don't know if they have anything to do with what you were, your committee or not, but there was a lot of different stuff that you, you have a paper trailer, like I said, about fifty FOIA. So I don't know what more it is that you're looking for, but whatever it is, I don't know. So say that you haven't gotten the answers, yes, you have, you've gotten answers. You've gotten requests, you've gotten paper. I even have the, the copies of the stuff that you've got that you turned into the Attorney General's statement that you didn't get this or whatever. So you have gotten your answers. Now whether they are pertain to your committee, I'm not sure because some of them I didn't understand myself, but they were answered. So I don't know, but by you saying that you haven't gotten answers, it's not true if you have gotten answers to every FOIA request except for the latest one that you turned in.
The information I requested pertains to, pertains to infrastructure repair and replacements. I can't get that information via FOIA. I have to talk to Jim Cerniak and you know this.
Jim Boo? Jim Boo?
We talking about what I need.
No, you said Jim Boo, that's what I asked, who are we talking about?
Oh, you, you know exactly, well, we don't need to go through this today. Robinson Engineering, we need to get the information in order to make an informed decision. So you, you guys are trying to, you rather...
It's not you guys, it's only you.
Oh, here we go, this crap again. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like some information on infrastructure repair. Yeah. Uh, infrastructure repair, and I haven't given up the floor. So I'm asking for this stuff again, which I can't seem to get from you. You make every effort not to give me the information I needed in order to make an informed decision. I need to sit down with Robinson Engineering and Public Works to find out how many, uh, square inches of, of pipes we have gotten or what needs to be done. Those things need to be answered. How many, um, fire hydrants that need to be repaired? What about the water main breaks? We had a big water main break on two-hundred-and-twenty-first, what are we doing about that? Those answers I cannot ask through a quest, uh, through a FOIA, they cannot be answered through a FOIA. I have to sit down and talk to Jim and you told me that it's going to cost you a few bucks. And all I want to do is have him come in an hour early and ask me and direct me into what I need to look for. And so I'm asking that again. And so, I'm asking that again for that information. Can I go on with that particular item?
You still can say you have...
Oh, I got the floor. Second thing I want to talk about is that last week, I asked about the getting copies from the copy machine, and I talked to Gerald, and he indicated there's nothing wrong with the copy machine, that whoever's changing the code on it is doing it intentionally. So, I don't know why you find that funny.
He can't tell you that.
I have the floor, Mr. Mayor. I have the floor, Mr. Mayor.
I don't care about the floor.
I have the floor, Mr. Mayor.
You made a mistake that's incorrect.
Ms. Villis-Cur, would you please note that she, he's violating the Open Meetings Act? I'm talking, he's interrupting me on the floor.
Read about the board, read.
You interrupted me on the floor. And you need to get some information to residents and also to myself. I need copies and the stuff on these information that I requested. You guys, whoever is keeping me from keeping, doing my fiduciary duties, I can't get information from you or whoever's changing that code, an administrative code.
I don't even know the code.
I know you know the code. So, I would ask you, whoever's doing it, to stop doing it. Because, I mean, you, you guys are messing with government equipment, you know? So, you know, I have a right to use it, and I'd like to know why I can't use it. Why is somebody changing the code on it all the time? It's getting a little ridiculous. That's the end of that comment.
Are you through? Budgeting and Financing, Trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next Tuesday, I'll present the board with the service security policy that my committees are working on, so hopefully we can get that on the agenda for next Tuesday. And also, next Wednesday will be another committee meeting here at the Rotunda at 7:00 PM, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Housing and Governmental Relations Committee, Trustee Cecil Tate. Excuse me, excuse me, trustee. Why is that so funny to you, trustee Brewer? I'm just asking.
Are you talking to me? Are you finished?
Yes, I said, I'm just...
Oh, well, Mr. Mayor, I was clearing my throat, and, okay, now you're going to tell me what I was doing, so you need to keep on...
Ordinance Review Committee, Trustee Lenny Tye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we, are we all right now? Okay. The Ordinance Review Committee is going to meet November 5th, which is a Monday at 6:30 here at the Rotunda. And so, we have made, we've decided that on the first Monday of the month at 6:30, that's when our meetings will be. And that ends my report.
Public Safety Committee, Trustee Bev Zupan.
Oh, boy, yes. So, I have a few things. First off, our next committee meeting will be Wednesday, November 7th, 6:00 PM here in the Rotunda. Secondly, sorry, there's a bit of confusion around Trick or Treat and Halloween. If you received your water bill recently, you'll notice it had the incorrect time, which conflicted with what we said at last week's committee meeting. Trick or Treat is officially 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM on Wednesday, the 31st, not 3:00 to 6:00. So, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. We'll make sure that everything does show 4:00 to 7:00 going forward. I want to reiterate, Fire Safety Week, Denny, when he was talking about it, was talking about the, the safety trailer and the open house this coming Saturday, the 14th. I, I just want to take a quick minute, I know there's not very many people here tonight, but if you haven't gone through their safety trailer, you really need to do so. Take the time to go through it, sit down, talk to the firemen. They did an awesome job with that thing with a very low... And sit down with the kids and teach them about fire prevention, how to escape, what to do if you find yourself in certain situations, how to react and respond when you find yourself in, in certain situations. And it's a really great, kudos to them for what they did with a very low budget to, to really do a, a, a great thing for our community with Ed and the team. Ed really led, led the group of them with turning that, that trailer into a really great piece of equipment for our, our community. So, if you haven't had a chance to see that, please do so this Saturday from 10:00 to 1:00. The other thing I wanted to comment on as well was, if you happen to notice on Facebook, I'm not on Facebook a ton myself, nor do I tend to talk about it much, but the SOC Village E-News is one that our clerk puts posts out there, and you'll notice that she did put a post out there today that was one from our police chief regarding an armed robbery from the other day. And when I first saw it, I was like, uh-oh, was that something that she should have posted out there? And so, I hurried up and picked up the phone and called the chief, and I was like, chief, is this okay that this was out there? Because a lot of times, he, he shares that kind of information with the board. And he said, no, you know, the, the two of them had talked and it was okay to post it. And I said, you know, that was actually a great thing that he, he had said, okay, and that we had shared that information. And I had actually shared, and probably the clerk had the same conversation with him as well, to say going forward when these kinds of events happen, that we need to post them publicly with enough information so that the information is getting out there to the public, so that everyone is aware what's transpired, when, enough particulars so that you are, you know, in the know, but we're not giving too much information aware. So, you know, just be aware, you're going to see probably a little bit more of that as, as they happen. So, FYI about that. So, if you're not already signed up for that, it's the SOC Village E-News page on Facebook. And, and that one is run by Clerk Martha Campbell Pruitt. And that ends my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Community Outreach, Trustee Ronald Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees. At this present time, I'm still attempting to develop a relationship with some athletic companies as far as making arrangements for used equipment that's, that's safe equipment also. This time, I have not received any correspondence. That's, that's the end of my comment.
Thank you. Report to Committees and Commissioners, Senior Advisory Council, Chairman Yimich Farthing.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Our next meeting for the Senior Advisory Council has been changed to October 18th, and all of our welcome. Also, this Thursday, we're having a health fair for the seniors from 2:00, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We should have plenty of vendors, include Gen Care, Oak Street, Silver Sneakers, US Bank, Walgreens, Humana ERP, and more. Please come out and spread the word to your seniors. I do have some flyers here on the table. Also, the seniors are walking every Monday through Friday in the park behind the village. We're there at 7:00, 8:00 for one hour. Also, Medicare sales meetings start at the Senior Center on Monday, this coming Monday, October 15th, and will run through December 7th for annual enrollment period. Every Monday and Wednesday, flyers will be posted for all dates and times. Please let the 65 and older seniors know. Game night is every 1st and 3rd Friday. Please come out and invite your seniors for big whist and other games. And also, our first senior luncheon will be held on November 16th, and all seniors are invited. This will be a free event to the seniors. The lunch will be sponsored by Eastern Stars, and we're expecting a little early Thanksgiving dinner to be featured. And that's the end of our report. Thank you.
Thank you. New business, I'll accept a motion to approve count's payable on this first date, October 9th, in the amount of $254,571.95.
So moved.
Seven.
It was moved by trustee Lu Pahn, second by trustee Grant. Any questions?
Got a comment? Mr. Mayor, I'm asking for the following payments for four different individuals to be removed from October 9th, 2019, 2018 account payable. It's four invoices from Dr. Strater, two in the amount of $1,483.25 and two in the amount of $850. Now, these payments have been an ongoing concern, like to how much the doctor is supposed to be paid per hour. Trustees, some of the trustees and myself have been asking, how much is the doctor going to be paid, should be paid for an hour? Because what we have is conflicting. So, we asking that you look into this issue and give us some, some directions on how much is supposed to be paid? Is it $17 per hour, or is she supposed to be paid 17.45 an hour? We just don't know. So, we'd like some written guidance on that. Second thing I want to talk about is the, to remove the salary for Judith Soffin. After some extensive research, I was unable to find any Illinois State statute or SOC Village code that addressed the hiring of an interim director positioned for an indefinite term. However, there are policies on the books that address employment and employment of individuals. Neither the director's position nor the salary has been presented to the board for consideration, and that this is an issue that needs to be addressed. Currently, Miss Soffin is working illegally in the capacity of director and making financial decisions with effect the SOC Village residents without approval from the board. The Illinois State Statutes and SOC Village Code provide that potential employees present, are presented to the board for approval. To date, no position or salary had presented to the board for consideration. However, we have been advised that Miss Soffin will be working indefinitely. I also ask that the payments for Hiskel, Diller, O'Donnell, and Lapp be removed, because again, these attorneys have been working for the village, and they have not been approved by the board. According to Illinois State Statute 65 IL CS 3-1-30, they have to be confirmed by the board of trustees. To date, their attorney has not been presented for the board for confirmation. Also, the last item I'd like to be removed is Kane McKenney for $726.25. I can't seem to find invoices for that, and I wonder why Kane McKenney is getting off, well, this is only $726, $756. I'd like to know what is she getting paid for, and I'd like a copy of the invoice that she's getting paid for. So, I ask that these items be removed, so we get some additional information, get some attorneys in here to find out what's going on with Dr. Strater. Also, when are we going to appoint Miss Soffin? And also, when are we going to appoint the attorneys? They shouldn't be working for us unless they're approved by the board. None of these people have come to the board for anything, for approval, dismissal, whatever. So, we need to take a look at that and get whoever needs to be approved by the board.
You have a question?
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd? Trustee Zupan? Trustee Brewer? Trustee Carter? Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Motion to approve an ordinance amending Article 1 in general of Chapter 10 of the Animal Control of the Municipal Code of the Village of SOC Village. It was moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Zupan. Any questions? Madam clerk?
Trustee Todd? Trustee Zupan? Trustee Brewer? Trustee Carter? Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Motion is carried. Motion to approve ordinance amending Article 11, Chapter 18, the Business and Business Regulations of the Municipal Code of the Village of SOC Village.
So, second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Brewer. Any questions? Madam clerk?
Trustee Zupan? Trustee Brewer? Trustee Carter? Trustee Grant? Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Motion is carried. I'd like to go into executive session and deal with our number, item D. There's a few things that were brought to my attention, so I'd like to move into executive session for real space. It was moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Carter. Madam clerk, please call.
Trustee Brewer? Trustee Carter? Trustee Grant? Trustee Tate?
Motion is carried. We'll recess, we'll be right back out. Madam clerk, please call. Read from me.
Trustee Brewer?
Present.
Trustee Carter? Trustee Grant? Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd? And trustee Carter?
Okay. Item number D. We have the motion on here. I just want to explain that because we never had a chance to really explain. We got, the board got this last week, and I asked them to look it over. And basically, what it is, is a disconnection. We're going to disconnect the property that's right there on SOC, I'm sorry, Steger Road, south of Steger Road, west of 394, and east of, east of 394. I'm sorry, not west of 394, east of 394. And it's basically, we're going to disconnect that and then let Crete annex that. That's something that's been going on for years, 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 and years, and we finally came and got this kind of ironed out. However, with that being said, there's a couple of things that we had asked to be put into this particular request that were not put in. So, what we're going to do, and what the board is going to do, is ask for these changes. We will, and they had a chance, they looked at the request to disconnect, and they want the changes to be put in there, the word, the verbiage and everything. First of all, there's a couple of things that are in the request, in the actual ordinance, and it's, and it's on there for I-394, it should be Illinois 394. That needs to be rewritten. And then, also, to have it in here, in the ordinance, and also this particular request to, that Crete would not go any further north of Steger Road, west of, I'm sorry, east of 394. That needs to be put in there. But that being said, though, I'll accept the motion to accept the agreement with those necessary corrections, which will be given to the board. A new resolution will be given to the board that would include that, but in all the, this particular request, we can go ahead and go forward with it, unless there's any more questions.
I actually just want, if I could make a comment first?
Go ahead.
Just because the public didn't get a chance to, to see this, and, and we've talked about this. This is the infamous Foot... This is the infamous footprint into Will County for Sauk Village. It's our only footprint into Will County, and this will eliminate that. It's the property north of Culvers, right? It's that corner slightly less than four acres right there. And we will be receiving $70,000 for that, the annexation, if you will. The flip side is if we don't do this, we would have to make water available to whoever would purchase this land. And to do that would cost us in excess of a million dollars, which would be really cost prohibitive. And if we didn't do that and someone purchased the property and we understand that there is someone interested in the property, they could take us to court and we could find ourselves in a costly legal battle in addition to having to supply water. So we kind of found ourselves in a position of it probably makes the most sense to really de-annex this and to let that go, if you will. So I, if nobody else has any other comments, I was going to go ahead and make the motion with those two corrections for us to, once we do receive those, the corrected ordinance, not resolution, this is an ordinance, that we pass this.
Motion has been made.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Zupan, seconded by trustee Todd.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll accept the motion for adjournment. Moved by trustee Brewer, seconded by trustee Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.